Do we want to, council people, would you want to ask Jerry questions first? Or what would you, how would you like to handle this? The recommendation by staff is to still reject the ordinance for an encroachment permit. Ole, did you want to chime in on this at all?
Since previously applicants rejected my one idea, I would probably go along with staff recommendation.
Okay. All righty. I also spent a lot of time with Jerry on it and, well, there's two things. There's one, the whole issue of do, are we really in a position to start offering more, you know, having to look at these things and deciding on a case-by-case basis, which is what the city has done always in the past. When it comes to this item, I know he had, Jerry had a space that he really wanted, well, space that he preferred the most was the one right there in front of Yoshi's and where the trash can is. And I appreciate all the photos and the work you did for this, but in terms of opening up a can of worms for everybody else, because we all, we all are being approached by more than one person on something that they would want to do, until we as a city really said this is the way we wanted to go and these are the areas we would do it. Maybe it's at people's part, we have something happen, you know. To me, it's tough at this time too, to approve this, but that's just me. But do we want to hear from the public, Jerry first and then the public? Or how do we want to do this?
Yeah, he's up there.
Okay, you should, go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry Dunn, 133 Upper Terrace. I don't want to yammer on like I did the last time to try to explain why I think this is a great idea, but I think that having some newness in town is still good. I think having something that fits the town, that looks interesting is good. I think it fits what we're looking for now and sort of a grab-and-go type flavor for, especially this time of year when we're busy and there's a lot of places closed. I've walked through and I appreciate both Annie and Ole's time to go through and look at different locations. Ole's had a suggestion of the area that's kind of a landlocked spot across from the Pancake Cottage that has sort of a narrow entry into it that would be very difficult to, to work with. There's a, was another spot further down there by the, I think it might have been a boat launch ramp at one point, but it was, seemed pretty wide and looked accommodating. I tried to take some pictures through Memorial Day weekend to sort of demonstrate the location that I had originally picked, and I had hoped that maybe you folks had looked at that location at any time of day or night, on any particular weekend or cruise ship day, to see that what I was demonstrating, that it is a non-used area by traffic or people or anything. But it is up to you guys. I mean, I think there's, you know, everyone's afraid of the what-if, you know, what if there's a line, what if somebody else asks for one, what if there's trash. I think that if any idea that came up, if I was stopped at any time, anybody said what-if, I'd probably have never accomplished anything, because there's always going to be a what-if. And this is why I've tried to present it in such a way that it would give you an automatic out, that what if it got crowded, okay, Jerry, you gotta go. What if there's a line, okay, Jerry, you gotta go. I think I've given it kind of a, an absolute, that you wouldn't have a situation that would be a negative. I'm trying to create a positive. If it turns into a negative, or if what-ifs any of the things you guys are talking about or thinking about or worrying about happen, then you just tell me to move and or go and I'm gone. It seems like kind of a full, pretty foolproof opportunity to do a test versus giving someone else a three-year lease and a solid landlocked, or not landlocked, but a solid fixed building. You're stuck for three years. This is something that, I mean, I'd be willing to do a what-if for 30 days, just to see if it works. I know there's all kinds of other opportunities that you are worried about, that people might want to have, I don't know, hot dog on a stick or something, but I think that if you cert, put certain rules in place, or at least start thinking about it, where, you know, it can't have electricity, or it, it can only be one per block, or, you know, some sort of criteria that helps you stay away from the what-ifs, that might make it more comfortable for you. I'm not sure. I'm, I'm trying to make it an easy decision for you, to give it a chance. I don't think it's, you know, it's, it's that big a deal, but maybe the what-ifs are going to win out here. And if that's the case, well, I appreciate your time.
Comments from council or comments from the community?
Here's some what-ifs. What if you put it at Lover's Cove? Or you put it at, on the way to the memorial? Or somewhere in Casino Point, where there's not refreshments at this point? Because I have sat by the corner there for, I think, 65 years, and it's crowded, and there is no extra room, and there would be, very hard to have lines, to wait on a cart or, you know, just about anything, let alone next to the fire hydrant, which I think the fireman, the fire chief might have been issued, and in front of a vintage serpentine wall that is just, you know, really nice to look at. So that, I'm not in favor of that particular site.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Erin Eubank, 18 Canyon Terrace. So I spoke with some other business owners in the high-rent district, if you want to call it, and they couldn't be here this evening, but wanted me to pass on that if this was going to be passed, that they were interested in applying themselves, and that they thought that that would be a great idea to participate, if you're going to be handing out, you know, business licenses for carts around town. They did support the idea of the fact that this really shouldn't be a one-off, but should be part of the whole citywide plan. Like I mentioned last time, that this, you know, should be open for bid, you should have marked places around town that you're considering, this should be a much bigger idea and more well-thought-out than just, okay, let's give this a try for 60 or 90 days. I think we all agree, it is congested downtown during certain times of the year. And also the idea that if, you know, we're going to be handing out permits to people to have carts, how does that protect those of us that do pay rent here year-round and keep our businesses alive in the off-season when it is busy, when it's not busy? It was staff recommendation not to approve this, and was it the fire chief? What was his recommendation?
I met with Mr. Dunn, and I have no objection. The initial concern I had was with the unit, how does it operate? And the way it operates is that you plug it in at night, there are these plates that get very cold, then you unplug it during the day, you roll it out, and the plates stay cold, so there's no power source to it except overnight when you charge it. And then that particular corner, with regards to the cart being there, it's kind of a, I'll call it a dead space, so I don't have any particular objection to it in that location where it's tucked in next to the fire hydrant. It has wheels, it can be rolled out of the way, so I had no objection to it.
Thank you.
Chief's, his opinion is strictly based on fire safety, not on the code.
Correct, thank you very much.
So the code, which is why the city staff, based on code, recommended against it. So I would just say, if you are actually considering doing this, that it should be a level playing field. There's been many ideas that have been presented to all sorts of councils over the years that haven't passed through, and so why would this one be the exception? It should be a player, you know, a fair playing field, in my opinion, so.
Thank you, Ann.
And was the proposal here that this was going to be treated as outdoor dining, so we would get, what, $2.75 for 10 square feet a month?
We never, we, yesterday, we never talked about it.
We never got that far.
We never talked about it, yeah.
So that hasn't been decided yet about what the, what the price, the cost to, I mean, I'm just, keep saying to you guys all the time, find ways to make revenue for the city, and if it's at what, what I heard was proposed, I'm not sure, but it, I just couldn't believe it. But the other thing is, you know, let's consider traffic flow. I cannot believe, I don't know when that picture was taken or what the deal was, but I'm down there all the time, because I work down there on that front street, and sometimes with four people, I have a hard time negotiating where I'm going, because it's so crowded. That is the most congested area on the entire front street, and why we would think, let's put more congestion there, instead of trying to dissipating the flow of humanity, not to be on, all the time on the front street. So I really support what somebody said, let's look at other areas that we can sort of trim out. Like, I love the tables out at the dock, that, those look great, and so that would be a perfect place for something like that, I think, because it's, there's nothing out there, and it's not congested, like it is right there in the middle of town, so that's why.
Yoshi weeks. First of all, I'm against to put more idea, put those sweet stuff. A trash already bunch of, all over the bench of, under the tree, number one, flies, bees, not sweeping every day, and all congestion also. If he want to put them on those sweet stuff, put them on scoop, that's what made it for. So, I'm against.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, council? Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
I'm sorry. I am still open to the other locations that we looked at. I've done, not like saying this has to be the only location, so that's why we took the walk we took, to look at those other locations. The only one that I felt was kind of almost impossible was sort of Ole's favorite, that I referred to him as Siberia, because it was landlocked in a location that probably won't even be seen. But that, where that, the boat ramp was, that's the widest part, part of that whole walkway as you go down towards, across from the Pancake Cottage there, which I think I referred to as the B location on the pictures I sent you guys, is a viable location. I think it satisfies a lot of what the people are worried about. I, you know, and there is something here too, I was kind of interested to see that the three requirements for encroachment permit is that encroachment use is necessary or desirable, and of course, as Pam pointed out, desirable might be for who. But I don't think it's undesirable, that location, that, or having one. The encroachment use does not create a substantial adverse impact, impact on person or property. I don't think this is a huge impact or a substantial impact. And the encroachment use does not adversely affect the public health, welfare, welfare and safety. Those are the three things that you have to decide it does or doesn't do. And I can't really, in my mind, and maybe I'm obviously being somewhat biased, find that it, it has an adverse effect, or is not desirable, or is going to somehow harm public welfare and health and safety. So those are the one that really three things that, that the encroachment permit requirement, you have to make a decision on. I don't know, I just, I think it's a cute-looking cart, and I think it would fit into the town. And I'm open to these other locations.
Okay, but, and city manager or city attorney, is there something on the books currently about these kinds of things? Do we have anything on the books that say, we don't do push carts and hot dog stands?
No.
Never have had, we've just kind of, it's always just been kind of a no thing, I mean, just kind of a...
It's just been a council policy in looking at the enforcement and implementation of the encroachment permit, not to do it.
So, as I understand what you're saying, if somebody, a private property owner, like the Island Company, if it met health code requirements, could have carts out at Casino Point, that's privately-owned property, correct?
Right.
Right. But this is different, because we're talking about property that's held in the city's property.
Correct. This is on the city's property.
Public's property.
Right. Although you do have a weird provision in your code from the 1960s, says that there's no...
Way before my time.
I know, I know.
You can blame me.
No, 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 no. There's like, there's like no outdoor restaurants, and like, this is weird.
You know, is the, is the problem, I'm the first one to ask?
No.
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 No, but I mean, I ask about something like this, I'm not asking for a canopy and a card table, or a, you know, some of these other things that...
Right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you from my standpoint, and I think I was upfront with you, I think that what you have is a problem in terms of how you've decided to allocate the space that you have, which is true of every business owner in this town. We all wish we had more space. I don't think it's the city's job or a proper use of public property to solve your business problem for you, or for any other business property owner. Our obligation is to use the city's property in a way that benefits the public. So I, I have a hard time saying to myself, the ability to get a frozen lemonade 20 feet from your spot and not have to wait in a line for, you know, five or 10 minutes, does that really benefit the public in the way that this code means? And I just don't think it does. But I can think of other ways in which we could use our property in the way that you're suggesting, and I'm sorry that, I'm, I'm going to suggest that your idea really makes more sense if we want to encourage young people to become responsible business owners. It's a low-cost entry. There are locations like Lover's Cove, like the park across the way, like the, as you're going out to Memorial Gardens, and, but I know we have a lot on our plate, but when I read this, that's what I dreamed of.
No, no, I can appreciate that, and that's why I hope to find another location that was more...
To write a business plan and to do all those things, so, but where you're proposing and what you're proposing, I just don't think it fits within the best use for public property.
And the other locations down the street either?
No.
Okay.
No further comments? Is there a motion?
I'm with staff approval.
Yep.
I'm with staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Second. Further comment? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay.
Number nine.
And number nine.
Okay.
Is Devin...
Oh, Cindy, she was here.
Okay, item number nine is rejection of a medical cannabis delivery permit application appeal. An applicant filed the, her application after the deadline. I have Devin Thompson here, who has been managing our cannabis application process, so I would like to defer to her before we hear comments from the applicant.
Please, yeah, Devin, if you'd come up first, thank you. Oh, sorry, girls.
I'll give a summary of it.
Good evening, my name's Devin Thompson, I'm the Senior Administrative Assistant. The item before you right now is a request for an appeal regarding a rejected medical cannabis delivery permit application. The appellant is Zella Lassier, and she's a representative of Marigold Avalon. As you all know, on March 9th, you adopted by resolution the process that governs the Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Application and Permitting Process. The application and the evaluation process that was included with that staff report outlined how the applicant would be screened, evaluated, and identified, how he would choose the successful applicant. That staff report included the Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Application, the Medical Cannabis Delivery Operating Plan, and Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Permit Application Evaluation Process. After your approval and per the schedule outlined in the Medical Cannabis Delivery Service Business Permit Application Evaluation Process, the application period opened on March 12th, 2018. The full application, including all the parts that I just referenced, were placed on the City of Avalon website and made available at City Hall. We had an applicant briefing meeting on March 16th, 2018. That briefing was not mandatory, it wasn't optional for potential applicants to attend and talk through the application process. And the application period closed on April 16th at 4:00 p.m., and we had two applications that were submitted within that deadline. On April 20th, the city staff was contacted by Ms. Lassier to confirm the application deadline. Her attorney had noted to her that the application period had passed, and she was asking to see if she could submit an application. She was told, no, that the application deadline had passed, but submitted her application on April 24th. On May 9th, the city staff sent to her, returned her application with a letter outlining the appeal process. Ms. Lassier came back to City Hall on May 11th with the application, which we had to return to her again, and on May 15th, issue her a letter outlining again the accurate application, or, excuse me, the appropriate written appeal process, which you have for you included in your packets.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I just have one question. It's my understanding that the appellant here came to City Hall and obtained more than one copy of the packet, is that correct? How many, how many copies?
Yes, ma'am, seven.
Seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I would also like to note that those seven applications were incomplete, those packets given to us, and we asked several times, is there a deadline? And they said, everything you need to know is in here, and it wasn't in there. And why would we go online if they're giving us paperwork from your office saying everything is in here? And we asked, is there a deadline? They go, oh, they're not going to make decision for months. That's what they told us. So we were completely excluded from, and we, and we tried. We tried to bring it in there, and we've done the appeal process, and we lodged the complaint, and they told us, the paperwork was given to you. And we're like, but it wasn't complete paperwork. It was incomplete paperwork, seven times.
How did you know that it was incomplete?
Because we went in for the complaint, she said, the packet you have had another piece attached to it with a paper clip. And we said, well, we never got a packet with a paper clip. And she goes, all the packets had eight paper clips. And I said, here are seven packets, not one of them had a paper clip. And she said, I'll prove it to you, and she ran off to do whatever it was she did, and then she came back, she went, oh, they were all thrown away. So...
So aside from the paperwork thing though, because the, what I have here, there is a piece of paper, and at the, at the bottom it says, application period, and then there's a listing of dates. You never saw anything that had a listing of dates?
No, that was never in, in the packet that was given us, never was. Once again, if it was, if your hand in the packet says, everything you need to know is in here, why would it go on?
Let me ask, sorry Carl, just real quickly, did you come in and get a paper copy of the application?
I didn't.
Okay. Mr. Malone did, I guess one question I have, and this isn't feeling like we're in court, but the, but it is an appeal. How did the attorney, you say he's the one that realized the deadline? How did he realize the deadline?
He was looking at something else that we, you know, at that point, and something, he was online, and he got the information that was online. We had not looked online, simply because I was going in on a weekly basis. I practically live at the city, because I do the Meals on Wheels program. So I'm in and out of there, and every time I would come in, I would ask them, is there anything new? They would go right to that little drawer. I could have picked it up myself, I saw it so many times. And when they say that it was stapled, when Devin went to look for it, she actually said that she took the rest of them and put them in her office. They weren't thrown away, and she put...
She said she threw them away, because of the deadline?
Yeah, but she had them in her office the day we were there, and then she threw them away.
Because I called up one, and mine has, the last sheet is all the deadlines, and it just, and we, you and I've had this discussion on the phone, and it, to me, it is, it's very unfortunate. However, it was posted on the city, it's, all of our things are posted right outside City Hall. It was in the newspaper for two weeks, at least it was advertised for two weeks? Devin, can you, how many weeks did we advertise it?
We published the fee schedule for two weeks, and, but we did not cite an application deadline, we didn't publish an advertisement on the, in the newspaper, we only put it online, but it was included with the staff report.
Okay. So I just don't understand how when you go and make, they'll say, the fact that they say everything is in the packet, but you still don't say, but when is the deadline? And the example...
We did, and they said, oh, they're not going to make a decision for months, that's what they kept telling us.
Well, I don't know who they are, and kept telling you, I, I can't imagine.
Well, every time we went in, another person came up to the desk, and, and whoever was there, that's who I asked, and they went right to that drawer and said, everything you need is in this packet.
Well, I can't believe it...
So why was it that you kept coming back to get another packet, seven...
Because we kept waiting to see if there was going to be a deadline, if we were going to get more information. We kept asking for more information, and they kept giving us the same incomplete information, every single time.
And you didn't contact the city manager or Ms. Devin?
Well, why would we? We thought that people that are actually working for the city and doing this, and handing out the information, would be able to give us accurate information.
But I can't believe that seven packets didn't have that one sheet.
No.
Oh, I can, I can tell you, and I have...
I can bring you all seven packets.
And even the day we were there, they said it should, that it should have been paper-clipped onto it. It was never paper-clipped onto any of them, and when she went in, she said, the, it was not paper-clipped, there was an error. She told us that at the meeting.
No, that, that's incorrect, I didn't say that.
Let's, let's, just let, I think, one part of the time you talk, the interesting thing that I just heard was that you have those seven packages that you picked up.
Yes.
You have those?
Yes.
But not tonight?
Not with me, no, they're in a file.
How long would it take you to get those?
How long would it take you to get, take me a second.
Give me 10 minutes.
Counsel's prerogative.
Yeah, that's a great idea, if we could take a break, I'm...
The only thing I can verify is that I saw the folder that went to the front counter that had the 15 complete packets. They were paper-clipped, each packet was paper-clipped with, paper-clipped with all the information. That's the only thing that I can verify.
And my question was, did it, was it in a, you know, like a manila thing, like we get our things in the format that's been given to us?
Yes.
So in other words, there's a thing that is the actual application form, and then there's a description of what a medical cannabis delivery operating plan looks like, and then there's a separate document that talks about how the evaluation is going to be processed, and at the end of that, which makes sense, or, I'm sorry, at the beginning of that, it says, these are the points, and this is the schedule. And that's a...
Those are the things that we had to do.
That's a five-page document.
That's what we got from the lawyer, that's not what we got from the city.
The lawyer would have gotten it online and edited.
Yes.
And hide out all my information.
So, well, is Zella Rosie...
Can we then agree to ask them to bring the...
Well, let me just ask...
Okay, quiet.
Wait, 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 wait.
Quiet, wait.
We're going to let the top attorney here, but let's...
Okay, let's stop and keep it up to the appeal, that's... Okay, let's stop and keep it up to the appeal that's before us.
So we're going to take a fif, a ten-minute bio break anyway, and they'll go ahead and get the material and bring it back.
Okay.
Unaltered.
Okay, so we're going to talk about it?
Are we taking a recess?
Yes.
Ten minutes.
Until you get back. We're waiting for the...
I'll gather, but there aren't.
Okay, we're back on.
All the pertinent stuff that was required.
The same style of packets, what you were...
Wait, then you need to talk into the microphone, please, Zella.
No, but it doesn't matter, I can't. I can't. I, I don't have it with me. It, I thought I had everything in this file, but all I have in this file is all the stuff pertaining that we had to fill in and, and add. It's our proposal.
None of those are applications in that file?
None.
No, because it's the proposal.
Well, well, let's, let's see the proposal. None of these are titled this, like this? None of these are titled meant in delivery service business application?
No, none of them. That, this, all I have is the stuff like what you sent to you guys, and the stuff that had to be filled out for the application, that's all I have in here. I thought I had all of those, but they, they're in the different files.
See, it's just, it's just interesting when I look at that.
Because...
Look, okay, look at the first page. The first page...
We didn't have this. This is the part that we didn't get.
You mean to say the application started with this?
No, the application had all this other stuff, guidelines, and what you need to know.
There's three, there were three different ones, and every packet would have had it. All the stuff, so it's just hard to me to believe that this cover sheet...
We didn't get, I didn't...
You didn't get any, and also...
I didn't get this.
I can't believe in all seven packets, that was not there. That makes no sense.
We got a, we got a stapled copy that had all the information you need, like...
I guess I should have to go back to the mic, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We got, we got a packet, and then you were...
We got a, wait, one person at a time, please.
Yes, one person at a time.
It is the microphone.
Every packet that we got had information about what the business was for, what you require, like, what the ordinance was going to be, all the, like, general information about the business, but there was nothing in there that said points, or requirements, or deadlines, or anything. It was just general information.
And you had those packets that day, and said, and Devon said, because the other part that you're asking for should have been stapled to them, but the one...
Or paper clipped.
...in your office that day had none of them on it. And there was a stack like that, and it was like there's happened in the meeting that day.
And we actually showed her, "Look, this is a piece of paper where she wrote notes on the back page and there was nothing there." It was like the back page where she wrote notes on the, on the information packet we were given. Repeatedly.
Are you questioning if we didn't have, did you not-
So-
-the packets that day when we had our meeting and you said-
Those were incomplete. No, no, they were supposed to have a piece that was stapled on, uh, paper clipped to it, and I said, "We never got the paper clip part. We never got a packet with a paper clip on it."
And she came back in the office and, and there were like, am I correct?
When you came to my office to, to lodge your-
Lodge the complaint.
Complaint, I asked what you had. I said that there were three things attached in the packets that were passed out to everybody. You said you never received any of that.
Right, and we actually showed you what we received.
She was midpoint.
Yes.
You showed me the only, uh, piece of papers that you had, you said that you received. At that point, I did not know that you had, Zella, that you had come seven times previously to receive packets. All I did is I listened to you. I would never tell anybody that's sitting in front of me that I, I think that you're not telling me the correct information. I said I needed to investigate it. I asked, um, if, I think Devon was in the other office, you know, what did you provide? We are in the habit of tossing things after a time of, of an expiration because we have so many papers.
Exactly.
So I couldn't produce for you those three, so I was asking for a sample so I would know what you should have received in your packet. And that's what I was trying to show you at the desk, and then I said that I would investigate it and get back to you.
Yeah, and-
If, if Devon not go in and come back and tell you that the information that we should have gotten were not on the packets in that folder and they weren't stapled on any of those, and she picked them up and put them on her desk or your desk or threw them, I don't, I'm not, but you sent her in-
Yes, I wanted to see if she could produce the packet for me.
And she couldn't produce the packet because it was past the deadline.
We were way past, that's correct.
Yes. And, but, uh, and we showed you the packets that we were given and none of them had that information on it. None of them, not one. And I said, "We never got a staple, a, a paper clipped copy of anything. All we got was this basic ordinance paper." And no matter how many times we walked in and said, "Do you have any more information?" We were given the same piece of paper, of this same packet of information that did not have anything on it. And they kept telling us, "Everything you need is in here. Everything you need is in here."
And my-
Can we ask Devon?
Sweetheart.
Please, go.
Would you not come back in the, uh, in the meeting and said, there's a, they were supposed to be stapled on, but they're not stapled on?
Or paper clipped.
Paper clipped. And, uh, Zella, you came, I think, once or twice to get the ordinance from me, and I, I know personally, once I gave you the, the ordinance, 'cause that's what you asked for. You said you needed it for your attorney. And I only gave you the ordinance.
Okay, I'm talking about the day we were in your office and very-
Yeah, Zella, Zella's back up. Every time she would go up to the, she would go into City Hall and she'd say, "I need everything I need for the cannabis delivery service." And they gave us an ordinance. They did not give us the packet. They did not tell us a deadline, and they kept saying that everything you need to know is in here. That is why we never went anyplace else, is because the employees were telling us we didn't need to.
Okay. I have a question. You filled out a packet, okay? How could you fill out a packet if you said every time you came, they only gave you the ordinance?
The lawyer, the lawyer got that information for us after the fact, and we then filled it out.
When did you submit this to your attorney?
Oh, our attorney-
It was like the day after the deadline.
So why would, okay, you gave him the ordinance, then you, the day after the deadline, he's putting together the packet?
No, uh, no, the pa-
Okay.
I'm sorry.
They gave him the ordinance.
Because it's my attorney. Okay. He's the one that called us and said the deadline was like a week or so before that.
Right.
And by that time, we had already filled out the thing because he had been working with us on that. I could have handed it to, and in fact, I did hand it, they, they didn't take it the day of the meeting. I came back in and I gave it to them, and they, uh, gave it back with me, to me, denying my proposal.
Which is what we do on everybody who misses a deadline.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But, but the fact that, that she's saying that there wasn't a paper clip copy that day, and the fact that you sent her to get it, and she, and you didn't even know there was a paper clip pa, copy when she left and neither did we, and she came back and she said-
She can't produce it.
Uh, they, none of, uh, none of the ones she had had paper clips on them, and that she was putting them on her desk or whatever.
So I, I don't understand the paper clip. I mean, when I got it-
Well, the paper clips-
She said that the packet that we were receiving should have had those extra things paper clipped to it.
All three.
Because that's when the date-
Yeah.
I had to turn it in.
And we never, and we never got them.
Okay, and just so that there's some way we can go back and figure out what we're talking about, I'm just gonna say, so there is, uh, the thickest thing is called medical cannabis delivery service business application. So this was never in any of the packets that you got?
Never.
Is what you're contending?
Yes.
Then there is a document that's, one, two, three, both sides, pages, medical cannabis delivery operating plan.
Thank you.
Did you ever get that?
Yes.
You got that?
No, no, we got the ordinance. That's all we got, was like something that just talked about what you guys-
Which is it? Did you get this in a packet?
Can I see?
Of course.
Here, thank you.
I don't, I don't know what's on the table.
Do we have cameras? And then the, the third thing-
Yeah, this is what we got.
You got that?
This is what we got every time.
So you got that?
I got this, but that was all.
But you didn't get, you didn't get the actual application?
Nope.
You're saying? And you didn't get something called medical cannabis delivery service business permit application evaluation process?
Yep.
Thank you.
I deserve a moon pie after jumping up and down that- I mean, we had, I have no reason to lie to you. It's, we have worked on this from day one, and the thing that I was checking to see when the deadline was is like impossible, or to say to them when I went in, you know, that I didn't give them enough information to give me the correct information back is ridiculous. I'm there every week.
Okay, so let me ask a question again. If all you got was the City of Adelant Medical Cannabis Delivery Operational Plan, that's the only, okay, and you've been working on this, what were you working on?
We were-
Because-
We went to school to get certification.
No, no. What were you working on to per, to, to, to send to the city if all you got was this? What were you, you weren't, what were you filling out?
We were simply waiting to find out when the date was so we could turn it in.
Turn in what?
Turn in what?
Our application. We had, we, okay. What we were working on was, we were working on, where are we gonna put this business? How are we gonna get our supplies?
Finding out.
How we, you know, like, you know, I mean, we were, we were like going to school and getting certification. We were working towards getting this application in, and we were just waiting for the information we needed to sup, to submit it. And it wasn't until they rejected, that we, well, until the lawyer called and said, "Hey, you know what? The deadline passed," that we realized that we weren't getting all the information we needed. We thought we had months because-
We thought we were ready.
Yeah, because every time we asked them, "When's the deadline?" They go, "Oh, they're not gonna make a decision for months." So we thought we had plenty of time to work on all this other stuff.
And they would give us that thing. Now, the other thing you asked, and I think I, you even told me, I was looking for a cautious, that was the only thing we didn't have, and the item company had decided they didn't want to make a review of it, I mean, it's a new app that said, "Why don't you check that new rubric of that?"
Well, but that's, um, that's beyond, that's it.
I know, but that's the only thing-
I mean, that's how, that's what we were working on.
Well-
We were working on the backdoor stuff, waiting for the application process to start. We were just waiting for information. We kept coming in, asking for it, weren't getting it, so we just kept doing the other stuff that we felt was important to have the business ready, and then, sorry.
Who else handed you the applications besides Devon?
That was the people that work at the desk over here, the, the young people that are behind the desk, and they would, they knew right which drawer to go to. I think I have watched them do it so many times, I can go and tell you which drawer they were in mine right now.
But do you think they would have known whether it was a complete packet or not? 'Cause all of these three things, when I got her, like this, and then they have a paper clip that holds them all together.
There's no paper clip on any of them, and they know that day that there wasn't a tissue. She'd sent Devon and she gives-
Zella.
I'm sorry. And, and when she came back, she said there was no, they weren't, it wasn't stapled on to the ones they were giving out. And I think at that time Denise asked her, "Are you sure?", and, and she realized-
She said she couldn't be sure because it was past the deadline and everything was thrown away.
But everything is on the computer, so they would have, she would have known.
Yeah, and they kept saying that, "But everything was on the computer." And I said, "But why would I go to the computer if the people working here keep telling me this is everything you need to know?"
They didn't tell me to go on, on the computer to get the, the other information. They said, "We're giving you these packets, these packets."
This packet, "This is everything you need to know." And so we would get the pack and go, "Okay, there's no new information. We'll just keep doing what we're doing." And we go back and no new information, so I, I feel like we, because I don't have a printer at home, I wouldn't think to go online to download forms to print out. I wouldn't, I don't do that, and Zella's not really computer savvy kind of a person either. So it, when we go into a place of business that is supposed to be running this thing, that when we ask them for information, we assume that the information they're giving to us is accurate and complete. So-
Can I, can I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Um, Devon, did, could I ask you, did you oversee or, who did the physical work of putting the packets, the application packets together?
I, I put the application packets together. There were fifteen packets that were put out on, uh, March twelfth.
And were they stapled in the manner that they are in our packets like this?
Yes, there was three separate components, and they're the components that you have on hand right now, the application, the operating plan, and then the evaluation and rubric. The evaluation and rubric is, was the only new component. The original application and operating plan had been submitted to City Council for their approval on December sixteenth. Um, so then, at that March ninth meeting is when the evaluation rubric was approved and, um, added to that packet. And we did speak with city staff and all three components were on hand.
And what was, and what was the comment you made about was, every time you'd come, they just, they gave you the ordinance?
They, well, whatever that, that first piece was. I didn't know what it was called.
Oh, oh, the operating-
But all it had was general information.
The operating plan.
Yeah, operating plan. Yeah, okay, that's, all right.
And you know-
That's what you guys are calling it these days?
I can probably time, but we just didn't have ten minutes and there was a time to go.
Her, her golf cart broke down.
But my agent, the other people too, 'cause they, you know, they were representing the whole issue.
So, can I ask Scott a question? Hey, Scott, so whoever gets this contract or whatever that we vote on, is that good for, is, are we revisiting that after one year?
It's one year.
Okay, so, to me, this is my thought. It's unfortunate what happened right now, what's going on, and if we just stick with the people that we have right now and then revisit this again next year when it comes up, and, and hopefully you reapply again for, when we do it again, that would be my suggestion. I know it's a lot of unfortunate things that happen-
Okay.
With, with, with the way things were going on, but it's already past the deadline. We have two applicants already, and it's gonna be good for a year, and then they're gonna redo it again following year.
So they have, they have to reapply as well?
No, what we just said, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what we said is we would review that, and if after a year we thought a second one was appropriate, um, we could then have a second one. And the other thing I had told Zella, that if for some reason the two applicants that, that, that are happening now, if they don't meet the criteria, if we have problems with them, then we would have to re-advertise again, just as we're doing with the chair list.
Yeah, the council has decided on the ordinance that there'll be one initial permit for one year, and after that, they'll determine whether they're gonna add more permits.
Correct.
Right.
And I understand, and I, and I feel for you, but I think we just keep kicking this can down the road. I think we got two applicants now. That's been passed. There's been a lot of unfortunate things that happened. Uh, hopefully, that's just my opinion, but it's up to the rest of us.
What's the cheating note there is that we did everything we were supposed to do, everything. I would not have, because I worked with this from day one, but you gave me ten minutes to produce something.
Right.
My car broke down.
Yeah.
But the point being, can I have a day to go and get these? They, they obviously don't have any more, and say, "Well, I can go and steal or anything," so what I have on mine, because what I'm hearing is that you don't believe me and you're believing them, that she didn't come back and tell us they were supposed to be stapled on there, and she's saying she didn't, which is a lie.
I think we should, well, no, hang on, hang on. I, I think there are, it is a time continuum thing, and there's the one time when, after the application was done, when the documents had been thrown away, that's when this conversation, from my understanding, occurred about the staple. There's a separate set of time during which application packages were given out, and it's, it's at least staff's statement that when those applications were given out, they had all three elements.
Right, and I have another-
They weren't all three there.
They weren't.
Well, that's what you're contesting.
Yes.
So how many do we know, other than, uh, Zella and Rosie, who else would have walked in the door and pulled an application?
Good question.
Yeah.
Good question.
I don't know that question.
We, we did not keep a, a log of applicant, of applicants, uh, but there were two people that attended the, um, optional application meeting. Uh, none, those two individuals did not apply.
Did they, did they get a, did they get a packet?
Yes, they got a, a full packet.
Could you, maybe it's worth a call to them to see if they got the full packet? Because if they got the full packet, then that's, I don't know why you wouldn't have. Pardon me. And they came to the, they came to the workshop, right, to learn about it and, um, which is another step for that they would have gotten another packet.
Hey, look, if, if, if I can, if I can just-
Okay.
Okay.
Scott?
And, and Scott, hang on, so-
Wait, Zella, the city attorney.
So, so what the process is going to occur is in two weeks from now, we are going to have a council meeting where the ordinance requires that two council people be selected to sit on the selection committee. Um, and so if there is additional information, and, and at that point, then you start evaluating. So if there's additional information that the council would like the appellant to provide, you can, you can either, you can act on the appeal now, or you could say, bring additional materials in the city, get this additional information, and we can present that in two weeks. It's council's prerogative, or you can, you can deny or grant the appeal today.
I, I guess what I would be more interested in is seeing whether Devon remembers who those two individuals were and could reach out to them and see if we could get information from them as to-
Or, or, or if it's not Devon, if it's whoever at the front desk.
Right, okay.
At the meeting, the other two people went to, did they have the whole packet, is what I'm saying?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're asking.
Providing additional info, the time.
And I wanted to go to that meeting, but that was the one I was asking.
And when was that? Was that after, what, what's the, what's the-
Yeah.
When they had the, the one?
Okay, so here's the thing. When it's your appeal, the burden's kind of on you, but we're bending over backwards to try to find a way to make sure that we exhaust whatever possible means there are to see if there's some additional evidence that would-
But after that, did they give out?
That's what she's trying to find out.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and, but that's just the means that they were, yes, they-
Well, that happened before. That happened before you would have picked up, 'cause they got them on one day, and then you go whenever afterwards. So the application packets were already put together, 'cause she gave them to those other people. So all the packets would be the same.
They didn't hand them out at the class, is what I'm asking.
Yes, they did.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
So the application period, which, it, what, um, Devon described is she prepared the packets prior to that date, was March twelfth. prior to that date, was March 12th, and then four days later, they had that briefing meeting. And there were, those packets from that stack of 15 were handed out to two other people. The question is, can we find out from those two other people what they obtained? Because that would be, to my mind, relevant as to what it was that was in the other packets.
But I would assume it goes to the speaking that passed, like through everything first, because she had everything or he had everything.
I, I actually conducted the meeting. Gabby Maronis sat in, and we walked through every component of the three-part packet.
If they weren't there when they...
Zella, Rosie, I have a question.
Sure.
How come you didn't attend that meeting?
I had to work that night.
And I had a doctor's appointment over the counter. You're talking about the night of the city meeting?
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I was, was right around when Cindy was leaving, and I was working 12-hour days.
It isn't something that...
Well, that's what we're talking about two weeks. We're going to continue this to the next meeting two weeks from now.
Okay.
Unless we want to just...
Or whenever the, yeah, two weeks from now.
Again, unless...
Today. Unless there's some...
Right.
So, can I ask a question, Mayor? Did we ever get an answer if they were just repeatedly given the delivery operation plan? Where did they get the application that they did submit to us late?
As a lawyer.
They said their attorney printed it off, the, online, is my understanding of it.
And I'm sure in that way it was there, but that's when he found out the date had passed.
So, what was the date you gave it to your attorney?
Oh, we've been working on it for at least six months.
What was the date?
But when did, when did we give it to him to, to apply? I don't even remember the dates.
Well, could we have his name and number, and we can ask him?
Sure.
Would that, would that be helpful?
I would be interested to know how you gave him the information, what medium you gave him the information, and is there any, like, if it was an email, is there a, a email date of it?
Did you, did you call the lawyer and tell him you wanted to do this and to set up the, to do all this?
Was that by phone, but...
Do you have the, okay, they want the attorneys to...
Provide all the information in two weeks.
In two weeks.
If that's the council's motion. You have two weeks. It's council's. Is there a formal motion?
I...
To continue for two weeks.
Okay. I understand that, but I, I would, I've sat very quietly, and I'd like to state a few things. That if we're going to continue this and not act upon it today, I would like to echo Pam's, Councilmember Albers' comments, that the burden of proof is on you, and we have spent a significant amount of time trying to put in your lap a, a decision for you to give us this information. We have gone well above and beyond. The, the issue is a, is a she-said-she-said situation, and, you know, for me, I would want you to go through your phone records, produce your lawyer's phone number when you had the conversations with them. I mean, all of that information, as much information as you can give to us, I'd like to know if you were at the, the March 9th meeting where we adopted the process of the application. I believe at the March 9th meeting, we also talked about the timeframe, or was that the meeting prior? And admittedly, we've had so many meetings over the last three years on this that, you know, I, I, you guys have been to some meetings, you've, you've been with us during listening to some of this process. We talked about the dates before we got to this point. We talked about the dates before we got to the application process. So, you're, you're, what you're doing is, is putting, and I will only speak for me on this, you're putting me in a position to say that you want me to say that our city staff is lying, and vice versa. You, you're saying that what you're saying is the only correct information. And, and so, we don't have any facts that we can go on, other than your application wasn't turned in on time. And if you have been working on this for four years, which I know you have, painfully, I know you have, and I appreciate that, but you're now fighting for your right to be able to submit this application, you need to give us more than what you gave us tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Now, am I going to bring it up? Do you or?
City staff. It should, they'll disseminate it to us.
Yes, please provide it to city staff, all the information.
To the city manager.
As the city manager, as soon as possible, so that we can prepare it for the, the next agenda.
So, we need it within a week.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we're going to continue it, then I will second Ole's motion to continue to June 19th.
Do we have any public comment, other than you?
I'm just, so we're pretty huge.
Yes, ma'am. Directly to Denise.
Okay.
Within a week.
Thank you.
And, and I think it would be fair to say, could it directly to, to Denise, just so we...
I have a public comment. I really believe in the motto, "Prior preparation prevents poor performance." And I've been doing this for, I don't want to discredit how long they've been doing this, but I've been working with this for a long time, too, before Mark Malan even put the previous thing on the ballot three years ago. I've been waiting for the right time, and I believe that this directly reflects how one will probably operate in the future. If the city accepts a third application, then the city should consider additional points to the people that, that applied and submitted on time. Also, I don't think that the letter is an excuse for her late application, because it sounds like it was a lack of knowledge on their part. She did speak to my own attorneys a year and a half ago, and they got all this information just fine. So, I don't think that their lack of knowledge, her team's lack of knowledge is, should be blamed on the city, and while two other applicants submitted on time.
Thank, thank you, Carl. Appreciate your comment. The other thing, could we make a call out to Mark Malan to see if they picked up an application here? A paper application from one of the other staff, perhaps?
One other thing I would encourage is, this, this all boils down to timeliness. Timeliness of getting patients their meds, timeliness of issuing a license, and timeliness of submitting an application. I just encourage you guys to think of the timeliness of this, and that this was first discussed back in November, and the longer and longer we wait, the more we're depriving the people that we've acknowledged that need this. So, I want to, just, timeliness is key right now.
Well, the action that we took tonight is not going to delay anything, because the, we don't have the committee forum to, to review the applications until next meeting in any event.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But your point's well taken. Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
They need to act on the motion.
Okay, there's a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Yes.
Call for the motion.
All eyes. And Mayor, I just have a clarifying question for Scott. The committee, I just vaguely remember this conversation in the past, the committee that will be formed to review the applications, the final decision will come back to the council as a whole. Okay.
Sure.
Close session.
Okay, we have four, we have actually five closed session items. So, first is a update on the Cohen, Avalon versus Cohen matter, dealing with the housing authority financing. We have conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation. We have two types of cases. First is a general discussion about the incident on Friday with respect to the sewer overflow. The second is an update on the claim and threatened litigation by Island Enterprises. We have liability claims, it's a separate claim from Mr. Stickler, and then we have conference with real property negotiators regarding the city fuel dock.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just a couple more. And we're back from closed session.
Okay, on item number one in closed session, the council unanimously directed council not to pursue any further appellate action. On item number three, council unanimously denied the claims. On item number four, with respect to the fuel dock, council members Cassidy and Hernandez